Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Kansas City Council, third and sixth at-large candidates for the April 4th primary election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platt Counties, and the local Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Social Justice Committees. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of this league. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you all to know that Elizabeth Dar is our timer and our Zoom key of is monitored by Laura Mockjoy. I lead our forums admin team. The public has sent in the questions via the league's website, LWVKC.org. Tonight, we welcome Joe RC, Kansas City Hispanic News Publisher and President as our guest moderator. Welcome, Mr. RC.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm delighted to join you all here for the Kansas City City Council Forum. Your vote matters tonight. We'll learn about the candidates for Kansas City Council for the April 4th ballot, who along with Kansas City Mayor sets all overall policies and budgets for Kansas City, Missouri council members, serve a four-year term. The city is divided into six districts and six at-large districts. This makes a total of 12 council members and the mayor. Every voter in Kansas City votes for seven council members, their own council member, and six at-large. Our candidates tonight are for at-large positions. This forum will last about 90 minutes. I ask each candidate the same questions. Select from those submitted by the public. The other candidate responses have been determined by random rotation. Each candidate will have about 90 seconds to respond to each question and two minutes for closing statements. All candidates running for this office have been invited. We have three candidates tonight, and I would like, if you will, for you all to introduce yourselves. Andrea Boo, would you please like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, thank you so much for having me. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Andrea Boo and I am currently the city councilperson for the sixth district at-large. I'm an attorney, former small business owner, a wife and a mother of two. It's been my pleasure to serve the citizens of Kansas City for almost four years now. And should you give me the opportunity to serve an additional four years, my goal is to build upon the good things that we have been able to accomplish in a very difficult first term. Those things would include building safe neighborhoods through continuing the efficient and effective delivery of basic services, improving our infrastructure, and that's specifically sidewalks and streets, creating a more resilient environment, also reducing crime through a multi-sector public health approach, and economic development that provides for smart and equitable growth and targeted job growth and development. Again, my name is Andrea Boo. I am the current city councilperson for the sixth district at-large, and I look forward to talking more about our goals and our ideas for Kansas City in the next four years. Thank you very much.
Brandon?
Brandon Ellington, third district, L.R. City Council. Since I've been on the council, I've worked on ordinances that actually increase community self-determination. One of the ordinances I would like to highlight would be the Office of Assistant Engagement, which allows nonprofits, for-profits, individuals to actually access DOJ grants and partner with the city. So counter with Councilwoman Boo said, when we talk about healthy living, healthy alternatives, healthy neighborhoods, and strong neighborhoods, I believe the only way we have those neighborhoods that are actually engaged and have the ownership of their institutions. And the Office of Assistant Engagement allows and creates that paradigm where nonprofits, for-profits, community entities can actually dictate what they want to see in their community, whether it's environmental design, whether it's programming, whether it's housing, or what have you. And I'll leave it at that because I'd rather get into questions.
Thank you very much. Melissa, would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. First of all, thank you for the invitation to participate in your forum tonight. I'm Melissa Patterson Hasley. I'm a candidate for city council, third district at-large, as you know. I'm a Kansas City native. I went to Kansas City Public Schools. My daughter is also a KCPS kid. She's been studying Mandarin since kindergarten. Recently, so fun fact about her, she got into Lincoln Middle, and she's very excited about that. Professionally, I'm an educational psychologist, which just means I'm on faculty at University of Missouri-Kansas City, when I'm not running for office, of course. I've been involved in a number of economic development campaigns, boards, and commissions, and I'm looking forward to explaining a little bit about my ideas tonight. So, thanks again.
Thank you. In fact, we'll go with you with first question. As an at-large councilperson, you will represent the entire city. How will you know and represent the issues of residents that are in the north Kansas City as well as the south of the river?
You want me to come go back with that one? Yeah, so what I've tried to do, I've actually managed a number of citywide campaigns. So I have some relationships really in all parts of the city, but you mentioned the Northland and the Southland. What I have found to be effective is finding out what we have in common, you know, things that we can agree on. For example, I mentioned I'm a mom, and so I visit the bay in South Kansas City. And as a matter of being a mom, I'm concerned about, you know, how safe is the bay? Is the bay going to be open? Is the different attractions working? Can we recruit and pay lifeguards a good salary? You know, it's a family amenity, so it's really important. In the Northland, you know, I've done the same. There's a little park that has a toy train. You can ride it for 50 cents. So these types of things that we have in common, just on a personal level, are pretty easy for me to see where we can jive and where we can find some common ground. A lot of the issues that are impacting the Northland and the Southland, surprisingly, are very similar to the third district. One of those things is, you know, police responses. How quickly the police come when you call, the responsiveness to solving crimes, closing crimes. Those things we have in common. And so my strategy would be look for commonalities and find ways that we can work together.
Very good. Brandon?
Easy. So we created two platforms, actually engage the citywide and actually to organize. One of those would be the No More Excuses Coalition. The No More Excuses Coalition, we've been active in the northeast area, doing movies in the summer, community events, and also a few, not into the economic one down there, and a few forums down there. So again, we've been actually organized with individuals. And I want to state this, when we talk about connections, it's extremely important that we dictate and we understand connections. My connections are people. And what I mean by people, these are people that work, people that work in restaurants, people that work in bars, people that work in stores, nurses, janitors, union people, not necessarily political connections. And I think that's extremely important when we talk about organizing and actually access to the people. One of the things that I've noticed, and particularly about the east side and the north west side, is that we have similar conditions when it comes to the people being negated by those that have political connections. And this is something I've been extremely cognitive, and I work against it. And what I mean by I work against it, I organize the communities to actually empower those individuals. And segueing back again to the Office of Assistant Engagement, it creates a process in which both communities can actually start to own the institutions in their area. So we do that, and we do no more excuses than we do First Fridays. First Fridays is at the So Right, citywide. We bring in all the city department directors so we can address whatever issue we have, whether it's the Northland, Southland, east side, or west side.
Thank you. Andrea, Andrea?
I, you know, I think it's a little bit about what has been said already. It's about listening. It's been sitting down with groups from all areas and finding common ground. There are issues that we face and have faced on the council, and there have been some common issues that affect the Northland, the Southland, the, you know, east and the central city. And we have to sit down and cooperate and find common ground and move forward. It's something that we've done on this council and that we will continue to do, whether it's meeting with our colleagues, working collaboratively to ensure that we're moving forward as a city, or listening to those in the community that have concerns, have needs that are very similar throughout, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's street repair, whether it's trash pickup. It is listening to the needs of the community and the stakeholders and getting down, setting down at the table and solving the needs of the community.
Very good. Brandon, I come to you again. Much of what is required of city council members is management of a multimillion-dollar budget. What education and experience in this area do you bring to the job? Brandon?
Okay, well, I started as a state rep for eight and a half years, so I have a wealth of knowledge when it comes to understanding how federal and how state allocation intermingle with city governments. Since I've been on the council, I've been a stickler on allocations and actually reading line items. So from the state, I practice on reading line items and understanding how departments actually operate. And I run that same understanding and utilizing application on the council. I think one of the greatest things that a council member has to understand is how city governance actually operates with taxation and the cumulative tax dollars that we receive here. I think part of the issue that I see on the council is that a majority of us do not go through line items, which creates an issue with misallocations or misunderstanding of tax dollars. So my background, my political history of being at the state, and what I've been able to accomplish on the council shows my understanding of not only governance, but also, again, federal and state resources. Then segueing with this, with the Office of Assistant Engagement, the whole foundation of it was understanding how DOJ dollars are utilized and how they're utilized at the local level, majority of the time of our health department. So when we talk about service dollars and service providers in the inner-city, west side and low-income areas, we typically have service providers that are not germane to that community. And what we try to do with understanding finance is create community self-determination and community institutions where governance financing is already there.
Thank you. Melissa?
I think the biggest strength that I bring to city council is that I'm a researcher. And so one of the things I understand is how to use data, how to look at, you know, resource allocation agnostically. So a lot of times, we're making decisions on how to deploy money, and it's very political. It's, you know, if you have a great lawyer, if it's who you know, it's who your friends are. And there are opportunities for us to be much more agnostic and just look at where we've been putting resources for the majority of the time and find out where the gaps are. So I sometimes get phone calls from voters about, you know, my street hasn't been paved on Red Bridge for 10 years, or they're closing Blue River Road, and I don't know why. That's a major road that I used for 25 years to get to work, and it helps me not get on the highway. Why are we not repairing that road? And so some people feel really left out of the resource allocation. And so if we had a simpler, more bird's-eye view that really communicated to everywhere, to everyone, where we've been putting resources, I think we can find the gap and we can find some compromise and deploy resources a little bit better so that, you know, people can see where we're doing stuff and where we're not, and it doesn't have to be just, you know, word of mouth and what you experience on your own block. We can look at it more globally. That would be one of the things I'd like to do.
Thank you. Andrea?
Well, I guess my most immediate experience with managing a budget would be the last four years that we have reviewed and approved a budget. And it's been, you know, I've said this before, but a difficult time in the first few years when we've had to make some difficult decisions. But, you know, Brandon's right. It's Councilman Ellington, excuse me, I should be more formal. It is a very difficult budget, and if you don't pay close attention, I mean, it's almost a 700-page document. And if you don't pay close attention and don't ask questions, there's a lot that can fall through the cracks, and you will not fully understand. And, you know, it takes time to fully understand what our $2 billion budget actually does. And if you don't ask the right questions, you may not know where some of the money is going and where some of the money is coming from. Before that, I'm an attorney who did major development projects and reviewed budgets. I was a small business owner in 2008 when I had to address challenging budgets myself and make difficult decisions. So I've had experience with reviewing budgets, making critical decisions. But I think the last four years has been an invaluable experience in reading and understanding how our budget works.
Thank you. Go back to Melissa. Crime and murder in Kansas City has been a top priority for every civic leader, every politician. How do you all address it? How do you see this? How do we resolve some of this? How do we bring these numbers down? And we'll start with Melissa.
Yeah, I think most people that run for office, you know, it is a hot-button issue, crime, especially violent crime. Most people talk about it. They have it in their platform. But it's one of the hardest things for any elected official to actually tangibly do something about. Somewhere, there's a couple of people arguing right now that might hurt each other. And we're not in the room with them. We're here. The police are going to respond to that, but it'll be over, you know, by the time that they get there. So from my view, I'd like to be focused on things that create a less stressful environment. You know, when people are stressed out, when people don't have a lot of resources, when people feel like everything is working against them, they can get into trouble. They can do, you know, bad things. So that is, for example, dealing with our housing. You know, housing insecurity causes a stressful environment. You know, people, domestic violence peaks, you know, when you are housing insecure. Kids lose time at school in their academic performance when they're moving a lot and they're changing schools. You know, neighborhoods have less ability to organize as people are fluctuating, getting evicted, or not necessarily in the neighborhood. So some of those upstream issues, such as housing, is a really good strategy to create a more stress-free environment where people are not having to commit crimes and find themselves in trouble because of the environment.
Thank you. Brandon?
This is one of the original reasons that I ran for office. And I don't think the crime issue is as complicated as a lack there of dedicated concern and understanding of elected officials. And I say this to go to how we actually spend our resources and how we expose programs. At the local level, we have a lot of health department-funded programs with no community-sponsored programs. And the difference being is when you have a community-sponsored program, you actually bring in community resources as opposed to funding resources outside of that community. So when we talk about crime, transient nature is the issue. Community stabilization fixes that transient nature. When we talk about youth not having opportunities, programming gives those youths opportunities. And I don't just believe in talking about the problems and we bring solutions. Two things that we pass at the council to not only further community self-determination, to increase availability of housing stock and availability of community stock for programming, whatever you want to, guys want to tag it as. One of those would be the support hubs, and support hubs allows individuals, nonprofits, community organizations, corporations, et cetera, to go into negotiation. City manager allows the city manager to bypass a land bank process for metric-based programs. So when we talk about unit gardens, when we talk about STEM programs, when we talk about workforce development programs, apologize for that, when we talk about all these other programs, people are not, are able to qualify. The Office of Assistant Engagement allows for the DOJ fund. So now we have a coupling of property and also funding. So when we talk about the lack there of natural observers in communities, or the lack there of programming in communities, or the lack there of healthy food in communities, or the lack there of viable workforce development-style programs in community. Not only are we funding programs, all right?
Yeah. Andrea?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that this council recently did, and it was led by some of my colleagues, Councilwoman Park Shaw, Councilwoman Robinson, and I think Councilwoman, Councilmen, excuse me, Ellington, eventually I'm going to get your name and title right, is the putting $30 million over the next five years towards violence prevention and intervention. And this would go towards programs that are in the communities that really fund our KC Blueprint for Violence, programs like KC360 that really bring together residents, businesses, communities, schools, nonprofits, neighborhoods, faith communities, government entities like local governments like Kansas City to address violence prevention and intervention through youth employment programs, you know, addressing violence prevention and intervention where we work, live, play, learn, receive our healthcare. So focusing on those safe neighborhoods, communities. So the communities that are in the midst of the violence, the neighborhoods, they can intervene. They know what's best for their neighborhoods, and they can put the money to use in the programs. We just passed this. It's over five years. And I think as, if we get the money to the neighborhoods who know best how to spend it, then it's, we can see, hopefully, a decrease in violent crime.
Very good. I want to stay with you for a second and ask you again, what are your ideas about implementing conflict resolution programs to reduce violence in our communities?
Well, I think conflict resolution is a big part of that because I think Dr. Patterson Hasley mentioned, you know, people are involved in situations where they, for whatever reason, you know, whether it's the lack of a job, the lack of healthcare, the lack of the ability to resolve their own conflicts. And that's part of the prevention and intervention. You know, we don't want to allow violent crime to be resolved by the police department, and they only be solving crime. We need to address the factors that are leading to the crime, the criminal activity before it happens, or the results of the behavior. Because it's, you know, there are various factors that lead to that. And I think that's what this council has been trying to address, whether it's, you know, the right to counsel and eviction proceedings that we passed, providing affordable housing, doing things that provide safe neighborhoods, better living conditions, so people do not find themselves in situations where it's either desperate, they're stressed, they're living in conditions that are just unacceptable for a city like Kansas City and a place like the United States. We're trying to lift up and improve living conditions, and conflict resolution should be part of that.
Very good. Brandon?
Yeah, no, I actually support metric-based programs over conflict resolution programs. I think antiquated governance is one of the reasons why we have stagnated criminal justice programs. And I said all that to go back to the office, and it creates a flexibility. So at the local level, when you talk about creating programs inside of the health department or inside of the neighborhood departments, you're talking about bureaucracy. You're talking about hiring, and you're talking about the city having to create metrics. When you talk about partnering with nonprofits, for-profits, corporations, or individuals that already have a program or metrics, now you're talking about extending services. So again, with the Office of Assistant Engagement, it was created to extend services. So when we talk about conflict resolution, it's one thing to have a program that says they mediate. It's another thing to have a program that actually teaches STEM education or a program that teaches literacy readiness, or a program that, again, places people in workforce development. To give you a quick example, Aim for Peace receives $2 million, and they receive a $2 million matching fund. SWD Strategic Workforce Development is a workforce development program that I first got funded from a state in 2015. Said all this to say this, Aim for Peace gives them $20,000, and they use their metrics to receive $2 million. But that's fundamentally flawed. We understand that they're using a metrics of a job, training, hiring, and placement program, and they can't do it themselves, as opposed to the city going into contract services with SWD and having a workforce development program. Currently, you see them hiring for the unions, and you see them hiring for the city right now. And I said all that to go to conflict resolution, antiquated programs, and creating a different funding mechanism for nonprofits, for-profits, et cetera, that creates a contract and a send service. Trying to get it all in, man.
All right, I hear you. I hear you. All right, Melissa?
I think conflict resolution training can have a place in the whole, you know, bag of things in our toolbox. I know it's very important for children to learn conflict resolution. For example, you know, when my kid was in the third grade, second grade, they had friendship meetings. And it basically was conflict resolution among her classmates that were, you know, getting into it over little kid stuff. So learning how to work through those issues as a small kid, I think is really important. I mean, because, you know, you're going to be fighting over a toy or who gets the scissors or what have you, and they do need that skill set. When it comes to adults, again, you're out in the community, and it's just a much more high-stakes environment. I don't know that conflict resolution can really help that situation more than tangible resources that you want to put in a community, like good jobs with benefits, for example, can make a person less stressed out than not worried about how to pay their life bill, how to pay their rent. I think, you know, you may be less likely to be in conflict with people if you're busy, you know, if you're at work, or if you feel confident that you're going to be able to pay your rent. You just may find yourself in less conflicted situations. So I think for, you know, adults, it's a little bit different in terms of how do you even deploy a conflict resolution class? But I'm certain that there's a place for it in our wide range of options to help improve public safety.
Very good. I think all three, or all of us that are on this internet today and Zoom, should I say, I think we can all agree that Kansas City has a huge homeless problem. And so what ideas can you bring to the city council that will address the homeless issue in Kansas City? I'll let anyone start.
I'm going to go ahead and jump in on this one just because this is one I didn't get through the, across the finish line. I got to have it across the finish line. So we was trying to do a homeless enclave paired with state resources and also Truman. Around the time that we kicked this off, the mayor came with his palette homes, and to make it non-competitive, I backed off. We did pass the resolution that would require Parks and Rec to give us a cost estimate of how much it would cost. And in a nutshell, what the idea was is that we take city-owned property, and we utilize that city-owned property, and we go into partnership with our health providers that will, we have an enclave in which we can take people in, we can intake people, and then we can cipher them off to the appropriate sources. Now, regionally, what this does, regionally, it creates regional buy-in and it creates a more, what's the word I want to use? It creates a better investment of our resources. So we have, it's known that different communities allow homeless people to come to Kansas City, whether that's St. Joe, whether that's Kansas, or some of the surrounding cities and towns in Missouri and outside of Missouri. It's a known fact. But we have no regional buy-in factor when it comes to collaborating with medical, when it comes to collaborating with hard services, and when it comes to lowering our public safety costs. So all of these communities have an increase of public safety costs when it comes to cars, et cetera. By creating an enclave, you create a single By creating an enclave, you create a single point, not wherever your homeless person is gonna come, but you create a single point in which you can maximize the type of resources that you have, and you don't have to worry about people not finding resources. They really want resources.
Thank you. Very good. Andrea?
Sorry, um I you know, I I think that um I I don't know if they're my um ideas personally, but um I we have a new, well, I call we call him a new um uh houseless prevention coordinator. Um and I think he is working on some ideas that are that can be i- if we support him, if we find ten, you know, the the zero Casey program that we have put into place can be very helpful into addressing the issue. Um that is, and I I think it's um a little bit about what Councilman Ellington spoke about is um a housing-first but not housing-only approach is to ensure that we have um resources to house those who are seeking um housing. And that kind of goes to what we've talked about before, ensuring there's enough affordable housing. Um one of the reasons that I pushed the right to counsel in eviction proceedings is to ensure that we don't um increase the number of unhoused people that we have because people are being evicted from their homes and make it more difficult to find housing later. So I think addressing, you know, yeah, um updating our housing policy that we, a five-year housing policy that was passed in twenty eighteen to address some issues to ensure that, you know, preventing, you know, preventing houselessness is one way to ensure that we don't increase the poli- uh the the issue. Uh but providing more affordable housing is is one. I that went by faster than I.
Yes.
Um yes, so unfortunately, the city of Kansas City hasn't really had a comprehensive homelessness, houselessness policy program for for a long time. I know the council has taken action recently to try to re- try to remedy that. Um other cities have been kind of on top of it for a long time and and maybe it's because we just didn't have the level of crisis that we have seen now, you know, probably exacerbated by the pandemic and now it's it's very, very visible. You know, uh before we redeveloped downtown, and I know many of you are from Kansas City, but that was primarily where the homeless population was, you know, by city union mission and in 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 downtown. Um and so I think it was out of sight and out of mind for a long time. For those that don't live, maybe, you know, li- live near downtown, they didn't really see it. Uh but it's been exacerbated so much, it's on everybody's mind because now the homeless population is clear out south, you know, by Red Bridge, which I think you just didn't see that five years ago. Um and so I think now we're realizing that we need a real comprehensive approach, which fortunate or unfortunate, because it's always been there, it just hasn't been a stark. Um so I'm supportive of, for example, um the uh marijuana tax that's gonna be on the ballot that will provide some dollars to to deal with that because it is an expensive problem. And so we need to take it seriously and we need to fund it.
Very good. Are you all familiar with the ranked choice voting? Y'all are. Okay, uh let's go with Melissa. What are your thoughts about that?
So I am in the research phase of ranked choice voting. Um I have talked to, I happened to be in a uh presentation with several um election boards. I don't even know how I ended up in this meeting, uh but they were from multiple places, not Kansas City. Um and they were talking about ranked choice voting, um some of the potential uh problems with it in terms of current equipment that we have. Uh what kind of voter education do we need to do before we implement it so that people understand how it works and and they're not confused by their choices or by the outcome, you know, because then, you know, the outcome could change. Um I think, and then uh the proponents of of ranked choice voting, uh they say that this is gonna make it more equitable. This is gonna make people wanna come out and vote because they can pick more than one person. Uh that minority candidates will have a better chance of being elected. So um so I'm in the process of listening to what everybody has to say about it. Uh my understanding is that locally, there'll be another push to put it on the ballot. Um so either way it goes, we'll have to have the discussion and we'll have to take a deep dive into whether this is something that we want to do in Kansas City. Uh but I'm keeping my eyes on it. Uh I don't have a position at the moment because, you know, some of the reasons to do it sound pretty good. Um and some of the reasons not to do it, you know, from a practical standpoint of implementation seem like I need to think about that too. So um in short, I know what it is. Um I'm keeping my eyes on it and and I'll be definitely weighing in as we get closer to being able to be having to make a decision.
Very good. Andrea?
Um so I um I I I think there are some benefits to it. I think there I when I first heard about it, I thought it was um it would be a very good thing for us to look at, especially in Kansas City with nonpartisan elections and the way we do primary and general elections. Uh because there is, um for example, my last election, there were only two candidates. And we ran the primary and the general and it could save the cities, well, maybe not the cities some money because if unless there were only two in each for both of the primary and general. But I think if if we impose ranked choice of voting, we would only have to do one one election. But um um I just saw Brandon's. Yeah. And but I think in, for example, in in the first election, you know, it was the same two in both elections. And if there was some form of, well, you know, if you got, you know, fifty percent or sixty-five percent or seventy-five percent, you know, you would ha- not have to run in the next. There there's some, you know, there seems to be some opportunity to have a middle ground of doing something different. Um but I I'm not sure that we're kind of there. I think it would take a lot of education. I I would I would like to have an open debate and hear the pros and cons more because we are hearing a lot of the pros. Uh there is has been a push to put it on the ballot. I think there could be some benefits to save the city from having two elections, so.
Very good. Brandon?
Oh yeah, you gotta apologize. I'm on a zone. I'm used to messing with Councilman Boye Committee, uh like catching her when she's talking and other stuff like that.
Exactly. We do this all the time.
Yeah, but I I got the camera right in my face, man. I don't actually like it. I I don't like zone with the camera. Uh but ranked choice vote, uh Rasheed Aldrich, St. Louis, Alderman State Representative. I mentioned him be because before Rasheed, I had questions about ranked choice voting. But after watching Rasheed, uh win a ranked choice vote in a political uh political setup election, I'm not as afraid of it. Uh with this council right here, uh what what I've noticed on a local level is local level electives or or contenders typically rely heavy on uh uh endorsements. Most of these endorsements are typically same board members or cousins of board members. Uh most of these endorsement organizations have no community imprint at all. And I said all that to say that Kansas City has a history of orchestrated elections. And we see this from the uh industry that typically control votes and don't worry about if their development prospects or consultant prospects has any buy-in from the community. And I said that to go to ranked choice voting. I'm not afraid of it. I think if we had a system in which more individuals that was connected to communities had access to office, we will have drastic changes. Uh and I said all that to say I'm no longer afraid of ranked choice voting. Rasheed Aldrich has made me uh has made me favorable of it. And y'all can look him up. Uh he's a state rep, uh came from protesting, uh just won a uh 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 automatic race and also a uh uh committee race in a heavily orchestrated political environment.
Thank you. Thank you. What guideline, Brandon, what guidelines would you adhere to in making TIF in making TIF decisions?
TIF decision? All right, now this is one I'm glad you asked me about. So with uh development and development incentives, I'm not actually anti-development or incentives. I'm anti-how we utilize the TIFs and or how we don't remember. So I'll give you an example with the uh 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 TIF, a Midtown TIF. Uh we just had an access of nine million dollars that was voted on for the Gorney Allen Pa- 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 uh Plaza. But I wouldn't say this is the access because the original Jim Webber plan or the Midtown plan was supposed to reinvest those TIF dollars all up and down thirty thirty-fifth street, thirty-first street, uh troops over the main. We haven't seen an infusion of that. And I said all that to say, understanding the TIF, the original TIF plan and how those TIF dollars are supposed to be utilized. I'm not anti-TIF. I'm not anti-incentives. However, I voted no on a majority of the incentive packages that came through the city uh for several reasons. Uh some of those would be the tax burdens on the citizens. Uh some of those would be the costs associated with the TIF or the rollover and up. In North Kansas City, I've been supportive of some of the reinvestments of the TIFs. Because again, I believe the TIF tool is something that could be utilized. I don't think we utilize it correctly though. So in my decisions, I always look at the original uh construct of whatever was passed, the original uh new deal of whatever was passed and how those dollars are supposed to be allocated, and I'll make my decisions from there. So if we own the.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Melissa?
Can you repeat the question, Joe?
Sure. What guidelines would you adhere to in making TIF decisions?
So a couple of things I would look at when making a TIF decision is obviously the location. Um is it is it a location that's blighted, has a history of disinvestment? Um it is, is it a continuously distressed census tract area? I will look at that first. Um secondly, I would um think about um how the taxing jurisdictions feel about the project. Um I know that especially the school district gets gets kind of a a bad rap uh for being against TIF projects, but um there are some that they've been for, you know, and that they liked. Um so I I wanna see where, uh sorry, my cat. Um so I would like to see, you know, where they are and what their opinions are, the taxing jurisdictions, and not just the school district, but the library, the mental health levy. I wanna know uh what they think about it. Sometimes a TIF project, you know, you give up the tax money because it's housing, for example, which students and people they use the library need. Uh so there's that trade-off. And then and then I'd listen to the neighborhood where the project's gonna take place. Um oftentimes, the neighborhoods can warn the developer about the structure of the project, you know, is it too many units? Is it too few units? Is what's the parking situation gonna be? Is this a dangerous corner? Um they can really warn uh the developer about, you know, the neighborhood because they live there. Um so I would definitely wanna talk to the neighborhood. Those are the three uh main approaches I would use when we're reviewing a TIF project.
Thank you. Andrea?
Well, I think first of all, I would say um that we as a council need to have a um a we need to revisit our economic development policy so that we can say as a council, what are the guidelines that we are going to use in evaluating TIF or any other incentive policy? Uh because that helps guide us in making that determination, and it's not thirteen different opinions. We have joined our thirteen different opinions and made a a public statement as to what type of projects we would like to see in certain areas or certain type of industries. Uh but that's kind of my general soapbox that I've been saying, I think, for the last few years. And we have been making kind of piecemeal determinations of we're gonna cap um the incentive levels, which is good, uh but we're making determinations based upon um individual issues related instead of a global economic development policy. So I've used most of my time to say that because that's been my soapbox for about the last three years. But personally, I think it's very much, you know, what we've talked about here is uh the things that we would look at in making a global economic development policy is the type of industry. Um and that type of industry might vary throughout the city, uh the type of um uh the number of units, whether it has affordable housing units, whether it's something that's supported by the neighborhoods, the taxing jurisdiction, like Dr. Patterson Hasley said. Um so that's, I spent most of my time on my soapbox, but I will continue to 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 preach a new economic development policy.
Very good. Very good. Um you know, Kansas City Royals, they're shopping around, looking around and looking at properties, and they're looking really, 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 really close to downtown. They're looking at a downfall downtown ballpark. But there's some concerns, property taxes, increases of property taxes. How will you address that and how will you address that to the residents that live in those areas? Uh and also, do you want a baseball Kansas City Royals to come downtown? And we'll start out with Melissa.
Yes, so me personally, I don't necessarily mind one way or the other if the Warriors move. Um I was always told that Kaufman Stadium is one of the most beautiful stadiums in the country. Uh so a new one, you know, you got a lot to live up to according to baseball fans, and I'm not a huge baseball fan. It's a nice outing. Um so personally, I don't really mind one way or the other. Um I think that there is some some things to be concerned about, though. Um I've done a little bit of research as it relates to stadiums that are built downtown, any kind of arena, uh that's a sporting arena. Um and one of the impacts that it does have is on the cost of housing, and we already have a crisis. So I think um any real plan needs to have a solid uh sustained and maintained of investment in in housing. Um it's it's gonna impact particularly the third district. The location that I think it's gonna be is pretty close to us. Um and so we need to have some serious conversations about uh community benefits, community protections. Uh how can we protect legacy residents in terms of their taxes going up? Um how can we make it affordable for people that wanna live near um, you know, the the stadium? Um and and people that work at the stadium. So these are, you know, they're relatively low-paying jobs, and so can those folks afford to even live nearby? Um but even after we get to all those conversations, or at least simultaneously, they've gotta run a campaign. It's gonna be on the ballot. So really, it's on them to convince the voters that this is something that that we wanna do in Kansas City. The voters give the green light, then that's when I'll get to work trying to put in protections.
Very good. Brandon?
Yeah, I usually don't like giving up leverage in negotiations, but I'm not for the baseball stadium coming downtown for several reasons. Uh part of my old state district has the Royals and the Chiefs uh in that district. One of the issues that I had as a state rep was the lack there of any activity in that area. Uh so when we talk about stadiums sprawling, economic density or economic improvements, we have history that shows that it doesn't happen. Uh St. Louis brings it close to home when it shows it doesn't happen. The same, we talk about sports franchise or corporations utilizing specialized incentives and then moving uh lines or mouths to uh touch into new specialized incentives uh with the uh potential sites. Uh funny story, one of the potential sites is one of the areas I was potentially looking at for the homeless enclave. And I found out that it was a potential site because I couldn't get any uh any help from uh appropriations uh or 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 general services when it came to some of these properties down there. So I think the realistic possibility that the Royals are gonna try to move downtown is there. I think the economic incentives will be there. I think the CBA would be crucial to any type of development, uh but I'm anti uh stadiums. And when you look at inner cities and any area in the city that a stadium was built in, no improvements. If you look at Twenty-Fifth and Prospect, where the stadium used to be, no improvements. Uh so I think if they move from where they're at, it's gonna leave eyesore. I don't think it has any type of economic benefit at all outside of the ownership of the stadiums. And I am a strong uh opponent of moving the Royals or the Chiefs.
Thank you.
Or new other professional team downtown.
Thank you. Andrea?
Um so as a, I'm a huge sports fan, um and so I uh I think I I think having a downtown baseball from from a truly here, Brandon, Councilman Ellington and I here doing our little uh neighborhood planning and development uh kind of little stitch here. Um but from a from a truly sports fan, I think it would be exciting to have downtown baseball. From a my hat as a a steward of the, you know, the city's resources and the taxpayers' dollars. With that comes a lot of discussion about what that looks like um as far as community and uh benefit agreements and the protections that it go to the neighborhoods uh surrounding it. Um so I can, I can, from a sports fan, like the idea and think it would be an exciting idea, but um on the other hand, we have a lot of um a lot.
But, um, on the other hand, we have a lot of, um, a lot of, as, as Brandon said, negotiation left to do. Um, I think one thing that we often do in, whether it's in community benefit agreements or with, uh, construction projects, is we protect the construction workers, uh, but we need to make sure that those workers who are working at the stadium are protected, uh, for years to come. And so not only are we talking about affordable housing, uh, women and minority owned businesses surrounding it, but the workers who work at the stadium. And I think Dr. Hasley, Patterson Hasley mentioned this, that, uh, ensuring that the community benefits agreement runs to those individuals, those workers as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'm going to stay with you and, uh, move on to, uh, several proponents of the downtown are currently, uh, boosting a park to cover six seventy in the South Loop. At a cost of two hundred million. It's my understanding, they've already raised forty million, is my understanding. Uh, what are your thoughts on that? And do you support that?
Um, so I, so from a, an environmental standpoint, adding green space, um, a lot of, I, I don't know, um, I, and I maybe Councilman Ellington has heard, um, I have not heard what the city's, um, 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 contribution is going to be. A lot of it's coming from the federal government, from private resources. I, I, they haven't come to us with a, a, a dollar amount. Um, I support it from, I connecting neighborhoods, from a, um, um, providing green space. But what I don't want it to do is take away from the infrastructure needs of our neighborhoods. And so as long as we can do that and still meet the needs of our neighborhoods, sidewalks, streets, um, then, then I'm supportive of it.
Okay. Melissa?
Yeah, my understanding as well is that they were pursuing, you know, federal monies, um, out, outside money and not any municipality money. Um, I think they've gotten, you know, some local, maybe I think hotels to contribute or, or something like that. Uh, you know, for me, I think, you know, they always say Kansas City is a city built inside of a park. Um, so I thought we had a lot of parkland available for people to enjoy. I know in the third district, we certainly have parks that need a lot of investment, um, that need a lot of repair and, um, streets that need to be slowed down. So kids can cross the street to get to the park. Um, you know, we have some, some ponds available for fishing and things of that nature that we can really use some investment on. Um, so it's, it's interesting, uh, but, but, you know, my priorities would, would be looking at parks that have been neglected for a long time. Um, you know, I guess it's a fun idea. I'm not sure how they are, I'm not sure what kind of funding mechanism they're using. Maybe they're using, um, infrastructure dollars that are converting a highway to some public use. Maybe they're very specific dollars that they're using to make that happen. And in that case, there's really nothing you can do about it because they're earmarked for that. If you can't allocate them elsewhere or divert them. Um, and I understand that as a person that's gotten several million dollars in, um, grants. Um, so yeah, I think it's a fun idea as long as it doesn't take away from what we need to do to our existing parks because we have a lot of them that are in disrepair.
Very good. Brandon?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say it until she says she got several million in grants. So let's be honest about how things operate down here. I think it's fundamentally stupid, but I think it shows a misunderstanding of people and how their tax dollars are allocated. There are no free governmental dollars, even if it's earmarked. Federal dollars, state dollars, city dollars are all taxpayer dollars. So when we talk about investments, whether that's on the highway, investments in our infrastructure, whether that's the city infrastructure or investments in our parks are all taxpayer dollars. So even if a private, uh, business or businesses came together, they're still intersecting with federal highways and city property. So it's not a private project. It's a public project with public dollars being commingled with private investors. Uh, I don't care what rich people do with their dollars, but I think it's stupid for us to sit here and allow a covering of a highway to be provided when we don't infuse dollars in our areas. Even if we talk about federal allocations for transit and improvements. We have, uh, hubs in our city, west side, east side, that don't have any type of connectivity when it comes to transportation. Yet we're willing to allow people to negotiate transportation dollars instead of earmark for a park to create connectivity. When connectivity is overt, right? Not, not, not single. Uh, so I don't have anything other to say about the covering of the highway, other than I think it's kind of stupid. And I'll say this, I think the downtown council operates underneath a mentality of we build it and they come. And I think this is one of the issues, uh, that we have in Kansas City with our elected class, our boulay class and our consultant class. Um, through, I'm going to come back on that point because I have issues.
Right. You know, a lot of, uh, folks live here in Kansas City think that a lot of money is being poured in, uh, in the downtown area. And, uh, they, how can you make the neighborhood stronger? So you're spending a lot of money downtown. Can I jump on that? I'll stay with you.
Yeah, uh, so that's one of the reasons why we created the No More Excuses. Now with the west side and northeast, I've been trying to get a bigger foothold in there. So when we come to communities, we bring contracts, we break down contracts. When we do the first Fridays, we bring department heads, et cetera. Uh, education and understanding the process is fundamental. And one of the things that we've been, uh, submitting on the east side, third, fifth, and little parts of the sixth, is that financial understanding of how the city actually operates, how the department should operate and the type of resources and the right questions that you should be asked. And that would be the same when it comes to, uh, uh, the west side, when the downtown council. And this is an interesting fact anybody can look at. If you look at my campaign reporting, you look at my opponent's campaign reporting, out of almost a hundred, uh, donors, ninety of them are downtown council people, right? And it's not being donated for the amount of work we've done. This is why I said I was going to talk about the millions of investments. I can sit here and say that everything that passed on the council, I'm part of because I voted on it, right? But that wouldn't be honest. It would only be honest for me to take credit for things that I've worked on, not necessarily friends that I've helped get dollars. So when we talk about millions of dollars in consulting fees, a million dollars in, uh, development fees, you have a, a direct contrast of somebody that fights for the community and, and fights to increase community understanding and somebody that is embedded with them. So when you talk about increasing neighborhoods, I don't believe on a local level, we will have increased in neighbors until we have elected officials that are not afraid of industry, elected officials that are not afraid of endorsement groups, and elected officials that are not afraid to be transparent.
Thank you. Melissa?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. And you know, residents here always think that we spend too much money in the downtown area and that residents don't get their fair share. So how would you go about making neighborhood stronger?
Yeah, I think, um, I think there are, you know, are dozens of neighborhood organizations that have really good ideas. Um, they want help building capacity. They want participation to be able to participate. Uh, what I've seen is that typically, uh, the city invests in projects that are larger, that are more glitzy, like downtown hotels, for example. They put dollars, equity dollars into those projects. Um, and I think aside from possibly minor home repair programs, the city is, is reluctant to do more small scale neighborhood projects, incremental projects. And so I think one way to strengthen neighborhoods is to, you know, fund those, fund more of those types of projects. Um, you know, neighborhood leaders obviously are not developers, but they have a lot of ideas certainly. Um, and they probably need technical assistance, um, and things of that nature to help them be successful. But there's certainly a way that we can get resources into neighborhoods so they can realize their own plans and they do have a bunch of plans. Um, and, and in terms of millions of dollars of, uh, grant funds, I'm just explaining that I understand how it works because I'm a faculty person and I have won several million dollars worth of grants myself, uh, for different research projects. So that's what I was alluding to, not, um, different economic development projects I've worked on. Uh, so that's what I would do. I would, I would, um, fund neighborhoods, programs, projects, um, and find a way to provide technical support so they could be successful.
Very good. Andrea?
Um, yes, I think, um, we've, we've tried to, um, maybe shift the way that we are looking at projects. Um, or, um, evaluating projects or, you know, divvying up the pie, if you will. For example, the last, um, the bond issuance that was approved by the voters. Um, there was a parks, um, component to it and twenty-five percent was for general, the citywide parks. And the council decided that seventy-five percent would be distributed equally between the, the six council districts to ensure that, you know, all of the money wasn't concentrated in one area or one park or, you know, downtown or somewhere. So I think it's, you know, some of the council members now advocating to ensure that, you know, the, the money is distributed in different areas. Another way is, uh, very similar to what Dr. Patterson Hasley mentioned is, um, being proactive in the projects and the development ideas that we have. And, um, um, Councilwoman Park Shaw and I have been working on a proactive urban renewal plan in some of our areas in southeast Kansas City where we're needing development, needing, um, opportunities. And we are saying, we're not going to be, we're not going to make you be dependent on developers or your own resources to impose a plan. We're going to help, we're going to be proactive, we're going to have, use the city resources and other resources to help you. So I think it's changing the way we look at things and advocate for those areas.
Very good. Melissa, how would you help promote environmental policies?
Yeah, so, um, I understand that the city council recently passed, um, some environmental policy that changed, uh, building materials, building codes and things of that nature. Um, you know, there's a lot of grumbling from the development community about those changes. They contend that it's even more expensive to build stuff. Um, but I do think that there is, um, obviously a commitment that we need to have as leaders to the environment. Um, you know, I think, um, there's some education we can do in terms of, uh, working with developers, maybe on the front end about the policy. So what I see happening at city halls, you have an activist community and then you have a community that is going to affect. And then usually they are not on the same page and they are not happy with each other either. And so, um, you know, there could be an opportunity to get all of those people together, you know, um, when you're building the new policy and try to bring those people along. But also something we can do in the meantime is we can, uh, we can be an investor in affordable housing. And so we can try to offset some of the costs that everybody is experiencing, you know, um, the cost of doors is the cost of doors, the cost of windows is the cost of windows. It doesn't matter where you're building at and it's really expensive. If we're filling it at the grocery store, you know, I bought six things yesterday to make a tapino and it was twenty-nine dollars. So everything is much more expensive, you know, and so, um, so we're experiencing that as well. Um, I'd work to try to close some of those gaps and have upfront collaboration when we're making those necessary changes.
Sure. Andrea?
Um, yes, uh, I was actually the lead sponsor of our new energy efficient building codes and, and heard a lot of the rumblings, but did try to bring, um, all the parties together to, um, to come to a consensus. And one of the reasons why we, um, we went forward and, but then included a delayed effective day um, was to try to get some Inflation Reduction Act funding to offset the costs. Um, and I think, you know, it's, uh, it's one of those, in fact, I had a conversation just this morning with someone that was, um, not, did not look favorably upon the, uh, new building codes and was concerned about the increase of costs. Because we do talk about, you know, we, the need for affordable housing and if the codes, um, increase the cost of, uh, a house, you know, how do you, how do you balance those policies that the city have? And, and those are two that I talk about all the time. Um, and so I think it is a way of trying to find ways to reduce costs in other ways. One of the ways is to make sure that our, our permit review process is shorter because time is money to development uh, just as much as in, um, adding policies and adding procedures, uh, or adding policy issues, um, procedures add time. Um, so I think that that is one way that we can look at ways to reduce costs so that the policies that are important, like preserving our planet and, uh, reducing emissions, we can impose those, but offset them in other ways.
Thank you. Brandon, you back with us?
Yeah, I'm ready. It didn't get rid of me that easy, but I didn't hear the, I didn't hear the question.
Okay. The question is, how would you help promote environmental policies?
All right, so environmental redesign is something that I think we could do. I've been supportive of pretty much all of the environmental ordinances we've had itself for the bike lanes. Uh, so with the energy calls that Councilwoman Bull was talking about, uh, the housing, uh, calls that we did to increase what, uh, developers had to utilize. I've been supportive of that, but I think we could do a better job of working with developers with environmental protections and redesigns. So in the inner city, there's a lot of contamination in the areas. And I think if we've worked as a council to re, uh, to make it harder to, uh, get incentives in non-distress areas, to make it harder to get incentives in non-contaminated areas and to make it more beneficial to develop in those areas with, uh, remediation of those environmental factors. And I'm going to go off, uh, just because it's kind of loud in here. Now I'd be doing that on and off, not being rude, but I know where I'm at, it's kind of loud.
Sure. Okay, uh, can you have another question or are you, are you taking off?
I can, I can handle whatever request, I'm just going to keep putting it to my ear.
Very good. My, I want to stay with you. What's the biggest threat facing small businesses in Kansas City? And what will you do to strengthen our city's small business community?
I'm actually going to be, uh, now I'm glad you asked this question while I got Councilman Bull on here. So now I try to do the whip count. Uh, I would actually be offering amendment to the, uh, budget, trying to increase the allocation of small businesses by ten million. I think we have a parameter of issues, whether it's our zoning issues, some of the red tape issues, depending on the type of business that you have, and also the support apparatus that we've given KC Biz Care. Uh, currently there's a, a individual over there named Neil Richardson. I think she has a lot of brilliant ideals, but I don't think her ideals have been supported by, uh, management over there and/or by allocation during the budget process. Some of the allocations in the budget process and, and Councilman Bull, uh, touched on it, once you talked about growth on being on the council and ignoring what you should look for. I think some of the issues is how, how our budget is presented to us and, uh, lack there of certain questions to untangle the presentation that our finance department gives. So in a nutshell, giving more support to, uh, KC Biz Care, uh, condensing some of the red tape that we have and condensing some of the zoning issues when it comes to small business.
Andrea?
I would agree one hundred percent with everything you said. Um, it's supporting KC Biz Care and, because they are the, um, the department, if you will, in the city that helps to, um, to navigate city hall. And, uh, one of the issues, and when I was a small business owner and, and one of the reasons that, um, another conversation I had today, the reason that I have been working on our liquor license, our liquor ordinances, is because I had a small business that was a boutique wine store in Brookside. And I had to get a liquor license and it was impossible for me to work through that process. Um, and today I was having a conversation with some neighborhoods about an issue that we're going to have in committee on Wednesday. And it, it is making sure that we balance the interests of small business owners, the ability to navigate the system um, in a way that is not overly cumbersome. Uh, but in this instance, also protecting the neighborhoods and the surrounding, um, areas. But it, the, uh, the inability for someone to be able to, um, go through city hall um, on their own as a small business is very difficult. And I get calls from s- small businesses all the time just to help navigate the system and that's not the way it should be. So I think the red tape is absolutely something that we need to work on and increase funding for KC Biz Care, I'm supportive.
Very good. Melissa?
Yeah, so, um, apparently other cities invest in their small business infrastructure, apparatus, technical support much, much more than we do. It's just, it's another one of those things with all the competing interests in our budget that sounds like a lot of money, but then you have to stretch it so thin. Um, it gets neglected. Um, small businesses are more likely to hire local people. Um, so they are absolutely essential, you know, to the community, to the, um, economic, you know, impact or, or of, of our city. impact or, of, of our city. So, you know, when people come to Kansas City to visit, whether they're here for a game or a show or visiting family, they're always looking for small businesses. They want to go to the locals, local spots, you know? And so we have an obligation to help support those companies. I, I certainly agree with that, you know? And I do agree that city hall is really cumbersome to navigate as a business owner. I, I own a research, I mean, evaluation company. I've owned it for about eight years. And I never registered as an MB or WB because I don't have time to do all that paperwork. I'm busy doing, you know, research projects. So, you know, it's, it is a process, you know, of gathering all the paperwork, which I have. It's just something I'm, I'm busy running my business. So for somebody that has a much more complicated company, it makes sense that they would need more technical support navigating city hall and that's something I will be totally supportive of.
Okay, very good. Brandon, diversity of the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department and the Fire Department has been an issue over the years. What more can, what more can be done to change the culture in these, and, and these departments to allow a greater mix of citizens to serve?
It's easy. We have to stop allowing people to tell us that we don't have control of our police department while they're getting settlement dollars to diss, to disinform or misinform the community. So when we talk about the police board, police procedures, police powers, protocols and the whole nine, it all falls up on the chapter 84. If the community fully understood that it fell up on the chapter 84 and we have, and I'm using racial politics on this. We have two members that, by color and proximity of address were representing minority communities. It only takes one member to make a motion. It takes three members to carry the vote. So we haven't had any motion made by the mayor or any other representative that represents a community of color when it comes to changing the policy of hiring, when it comes to changing the policy of community policing, when it comes to changing the rules of engagement. When you look at chapter 84, it gives exclusivity to the police board. Exclusivity means that the state cannot interfere nor can the city. So if the city decided or the board decided that they wanted a more diversified recruitment class or if the board decided that they wanted their law enforcement officers to reside inside the city boundaries or if the board decided that they wanted the 25% that they received from the city to be mostly invested in community when it comes to community policing and the police power program and all these other programs that they talk about are underfunded, they can't. As long as the community does not understand that it takes three votes to actually pass, we won't get it.
All right. Andrea?
I think that there is, I think there's two issues. There's a culture issue internally and there is a recruitment issue. And so I think that we have to focus on, we, and I'm, I mean, those who are doing the recruiting, to go into, well, I guess maybe it's really three issues because recruiting starts with building relationships in communities that encourage young men and women to want to become members of the fire department and the police department. And so it's building relationships, it's recruiting in areas of, you know, either the city, the school, the, the, the communities that are underrepresented, underrepresented on the police department and the fire department. But then once those underrepresented individuals are hired, we must maintain a culture that makes them feel welcome. And I think that's something that we need to continue to work on, not only as a fire department and a police department, but frankly, as a city. And so I think it's something that we need to do across the board and we need to continue to continually to work better on.
Very good. Melissa?
I think, I think in recent years, certainly the, the police department, but to a lesser degree, the fire department as well, these are just no longer jobs that people like aspire to anymore. You know, you wanted to be a firefighter when you were a little kid and you, you wanted to ride on the fire truck. And, you know, when anybody asks you what you wanted to be when you grow up, you say firefighter, police officer. But there's so much culturally, especially about being a police officer, that I just think there's way less people that want to be police officers. And then, you know, we've read in the press, folks that do become police officers or firefighters, you know, deal with, you know, discrimination and unfriendly work environments, you know, unfair promotion processes. And so, you know, they, they don't want to do it. I mean, so there's a whole cultural shift that needs to happen within those organizations and, and, and make it a more appealing job. Even the city of Kansas City, I mean, there's, we're facing the same recruitment issues. You know, working at the water department, you know, that was a good job, you know, with benefits. People wanted to have those jobs for their career. And now people are just not taking us up, you know, on, on those jobs being available. So not an easy answer, but I think, you know, there's some cultural shifts that needs to happen inside that, inside those organizations to make them more appealing to people so that they'll want to work there. And beyond recruitment, you gotta have some solid stuff in place to make sure they stay.
Well, we've enjoyed all your comments and now we'd like to have you all take a couple of minutes and share with us any closing remarks that you may have in regards to primary for April the 4th and why our people, voters should vote for you. And Melissa, we'll go with you. We'll start with you.
I've appreciated tonight getting to, you know, talk about the issues, share, share my, my ideas about the different issues, you know? You know, the primary is, is April 4th and we have some choices to make across the entire ballot. A lot of these races are competitive and, and you, I know, take the decision not lightly. So obviously I'd love for you to support me on election day. I feel really prepared to be in this job, in this position. Not only my professional background, but my life experiences, you know, and things that I've done civically prepare me to be in this job. I'm a, I'm a collaborative leader. I can work with people, even people that don't get along. I'm a, I'm a committed person. I've been hands-on in politics for, you know, a decade, ever since I got back from working on my PhD. And I'm prepared. I'll read anything I can get my hands on to, to make a good decision because, you know, you can't operate in a vacuum. And, and as smart as I think I am, of course, I don't know everything. So I need to be really studied up in terms of the issues. My website is mph4kcmo, the number four, kcmo.com. Some of the things that I'm really gonna be focused on are housing. We have several vacant lots in the third district. We had a demolition policy for more than a decade, but we didn't have a plan to put in any of those rooftops back. So I like to really spend some time deliberate, putting rooftops back in the community, increasing our tax base, making our neighborhoods stronger. I have some other ideas as well, but housing is really, you know, close to my heart and so that's something that I'll be working on diligently. And I hope you'll consider me on April 4th. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Andrea?
Well, thank you. It is, like I said before, it's been my pleasure to serve the last four years. And I hope that you will vote for me on April 4th. You know, as council members, we're often presented with conflicting positions and I take every vote that we are presented with very seriously. I am very deliberative. I am very prepared with, at, at every committee meeting. And I think that the next four years, we will continue to build, as I said before, on the work that we have done, whether it's affordable housing. Hopefully, you know, one thing as Councilman Ellington presented, you know, we, we need to do more for our small businesses. We need to continue to improve on our infrastructure, our sidewalks, our streets. We need to address and continue to fund our violence prevention and intervention because there are some things that we've done well the last three years, but there are some things that we still need to address. I, I appreciate this discussion tonight. We've covered a lot of subjects and this has really been a great discussion. And as I said, I will, I will address each issue deliberatively. And I have, in my last four years, been willing to sit down at the table and talk to, to all parties, even those that I may not agree with 100%, but I am open and, and sometimes I don't agree with Councilman Ellington 100%. But we, we always sit down and talk and I am willing to listen because I may not be right, but I want to do what's best for Kansas City. I, I try to make the right decision. I will be deliberative in my decision-making and then I ask you to vote for me on August 4th, or April 4th, April 4th, not August.
Brandon, you still with us?
No, I'm still here. I'm, I'm gonna be real quick. I'm gonna say the revolution would not be televised and I'd stay in the trenches. If you would like an elected official that is more concerned about people than titles, I'm your person. You want an elected official that's willing to bend over backwards and stand up against industry, I'm your person, April the 4th, June the 20th. Get with me. Reach out to me at brandon.ellington@kcmo.org for the No More Excuses for listening. I'd love to come down there and build bridges. And my election campaign website is electellington.com.
Very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, the audience, Mr. R.C. and candidates. Thank you for sending in thought-provoking questions and your interest in the April 4th primary election. A recording of this forum will be available on the League's website, l w v k c dot org, so you can let your mother-in-law know how well you did and, and share it with, with your friends. There were really thoughtful and good answers. Please take a moment to share our candidate forums with your Facebook, Nextdoor and other favorite social media channels. For your complete voting and candidate information, visit l w v k c dot org and c vote 411 dot org, which is now live. Thank you very much. Have a good evening and a great spring.